Good evening, and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of November 22, 2016. We'll call it as we ordered.
Please, Carol.
Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Mr. Souza, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge is allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, there will be no city council meeting on Tuesday, December 27, 2016, and the annual tree lighting ceremony will take place on Thursday, December 1, 2016, at 5:30 p.m. at the Veterans Memorial Recreation Center in San Bruno City Park, 251 City Parkway. Should be a lot of fun, as long as the weather holds. We always have a good time. This evening, we're going to receive a presentation, a performance, by the Cappuccino High School Chamber Strings. Just one.
We'd love to play another one.
Play another one.
All our music is out there.
(Laughter).
We can play the start or something for you.
Sure.
What do you have memorized? Brad and Bert, here we go. That's it. What? What? So we can start some of them. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
No, thank you. It's, it's.
We really appreciate being here.
We've seen the transformation in the last number of months and year or so, at Parkside and at Cappuccino, and it's just been, it's been wonderful, because it's, it's a lot of fun. So, we'll have you to a lot more council meetings.
Please do.
All right. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. (Applause). We just have a Christmas concert and holiday concert on December 15. We'd love to have all of you come join us.
Great.
So, come to your mic.
Okay.
And there's a tamale dinner, for those of you who come early. They're home making tamalas that we're making for everybody. And why I also want to remind you, the Cappuccino Band just won first place.
Okay. Wait, 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 wait. Walk up to the mic and tell us all that, right? That way.
Pardon me, excuse me, my name is Suzanne Creya, and I'm the Music Booster President of Cappuccino. And the Cappuccino Mustangs marching band, the Color Guard, just won first place, a Tournament of Champions in Fairfield, just this weekend. So they've had a wonderful.
(Applause). Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We just had announcements, but I want to make one minor adjustment. The tree lighting ceremony will be at 5:00 p.m. on December 1. Let's see now. Review of the agenda. I'd like to move item number 11, which is our annual report of the Park and Rec Commission, to right after item 8, public hearings. Next is approval of the minutes of special closed session council meeting of November 9, 2016, and the regular council meeting of November 9, 2016. Any errors, corrections, or omissions?
On the last page of the minute, I reflected it with.
Vice Mayor Medina, but it was actually Councilmember Medina.
Okay. All right. Any other corrections, errors, omissions? Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted with the corrections Carol just mentioned. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine and implement, or implemented, and the council action may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on consent?
To the Chair.
Edgo.
I'd like to remove item E as in Edward.
E as in Edward. Okay. Anything else?
Item J.
Item J. Okay. Any action on the remainder?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent.
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item E is waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance adding chapter 10.15 to the municipal code to include water supply cross connection and backflow prevention standards. Rico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this up to the city manager when we had met before in regards to this item. Did we have any additional information on about the cost and the allocation?
I'm sorry, I provided you the information about the, the questions that you asked. I'm sorry, I'm not remembering what they are right now.
So if, if possible, what I'd like, the reason for my question is there's, it's $42,500. There are 503 locations, I call the county, in San Bruno that are serviced. Staff time is anticipated from the county in 2015 was $28,000 in time they do surveys, which they estimate, to me when I talk to them, is that it's three hours per survey. So I don't know that this is actually being recouped, and I don't know if it's a survey versus a certification. So what I'd like to do is have the council, have it brought back to council to see if we need to add it to the master fee schedule and recoup those costs, because right now it comes out of the ratepayers, and if it's for the 503 establishments, I think that cost should be recouped, which I guess they do do that in La Honda, and Cal Water builds it into their master fee schedule.
Yeah. So the contract with the county covers a number of areas of activity, so what we can do is look at what the per inspection cost might be. Is, is that the request? Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. Do we want to pull this item and for further action later?
No, I think it, city manager, I think this item can go ahead and be confirmed, and then we'll just bring back about costs, and then see if it has to be amended to the master fee schedule.
Yes, we can do that.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Is that okay with the council? If so, go ahead and introduce to item E for consent.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item J is adopt a resolution approving an agreement between the City of San Bruno and the San Bruno Professional Firefighters Association, represented by Teamsters Union Local 856, and authorizing its execution by the city manager. Marty?
Right. So the reason I'm bringing this up is, is it's a good, it's a good thing, when you, when you extend and agree to a contract, and we have come to this agreement to extend the agreement through December 31, 2017, with the 3 percent increase. And I, I think that's important for, for everybody to know, and, and that we are in negotiations with, with other staff, and that's why I pulled the agenda, so that everybody know clearly what happened.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Yes.
A second.
Motion is second to approve item J, consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Item 8, public hearings. We're going to hold a public hearing this evening and extend the interim urgency ordinance regulating cultivation and prohibiting the manufacture, processing, laboratory testing, labeling, storing, wholesale, and retail distribution of non-medical marijuana pursuant to Government Code Section 65858A. Mark?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a request for an extension of an urgency interim ordinance that the city council adopted on October 25. That was before the statewide election, which we now know the results of, and the results of the statewide election is that Proposition 64 was adopted by more than a majority of the public in the state. What that means is that as of the election date, a number of activities regarding commercial marijuana would become legal in California, including distribution, testing, cultivation, and other activities. So some cities prior to the election adopted, as you did, an urgency ordinance that would allow the city some additional time to study the potential effects of the situation if Proposition 64 passed. Well, now we know that it passed, and so now we really need to start studying what, what could the effects be? Does the city wish to allow these sorts of activities in the city, and if so, under what circumstances and regulations? Or does the city wish to disallow these activities? And to be clear, also for members of the public, thank you, now I have two microphones. The Prop 64 does still retain local control for cities, so cities do have the ability to prohibit if they would like, or to allow and regulate, the sorts of activities that Prop 64 authorized. One of the things that the cities cannot do under Prop 64 is totally ban indoor cultivation of up to six plants. So that's something that the city has to allow, but can also study whether to regulate or not. Outdoor cultivation can be banned if a city would like to, you know, commercial sales, distribution within the city, all of those things could either be allowed and regulated or could be prohibited. So since the election, we've done a little bit of research, but obviously, it's, it's only been a few weeks, and what we found out is that the county of San Mateo is actively studying the question of whether and what type of regulation the county might wish to have, and they might propose some sort of regulation that then other cities could opt into, for example, on a voluntary basis. We also want to take a look at the experiences of other cities and states, frankly, that have had these voter initiatives implemented and determine what are the best practices, what are the sorts of regulations that cities might want to adopt if they wish to allow these, these activities. So the purpose of the report tonight, under state law, is that you have an option, an opportunity, to extend the moratorium for an additional 10 months and 15 days, so for a total of a year since when you adopted it, so the city can study these things. We don't think it's going to take that long for the city to study the issue. We anticipate bringing something back to you, probably first to second quarter of next year. So you can obviously terminate the moratorium as soon as you want, or as soon as you're satisfied that you have enough information about making a decision. So tonight's action, which would also need to be taken on a four-fifths vote, would be to extend the moratorium for the specified period, and then allow staff to come back to you next year with, with really a comprehensive report on what's going on in this area and how the city can respond. That concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anything for Mark at this time, before I open the public hearing?
To the Chair.
Marty?
Mark, so if somebody did grow plants outside, and we, we allowed it, or as they say, first we, we went along with the ban, what would happen to that person legally if they were to grow some plants, five plants outside? What would, what would happen?
So, state law, under Proposition 64, does allow the outdoor cultivation of up to, of up to six plants. The moratorium that the city council enacted said that there is no outdoor cultivation allowed, and if you extend the moratorium tonight, there will not be any outdoor cultivation allowed. If at some point next year, the city council decides to allow some of these activities, including, say, outdoor cultivation, then that person who was interested in cultivating marijuana outdoors could resume their activities. But as of right now, they cannot cultivate marijuana outdoor, and if this is adopted tonight, they could continue to not, they, they can't cultivate until you say they can.
Right. And the consequence of the, the, what, would they get fined for growing? I mean, what's the consequence of, of somebody growing the plants and actually getting caught doing so?
So happy to have the police chief respond to that. There's, there's no consequence in the ordinance, except that doing so is a violation of the ordinance, so there could be fines and penalties issued under the ordinance.
Okay.
Chief. Good evening. Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. Right now, the, the, the code allows us to establish this, this moratorium, which basically prohibits the outdoor cultivation of marijuana, which would revert back to the Health and Safety Code, which had originally governed that, so it would be a violation of the Health and Safety Code, which is a misdemeanor. So it can be a fine of up to $1,000 or a year in county jail, but that is highly unlikely for six plants.
Okay. Just curious.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and anyone from the public class to address the council on this item. Tell us your name and your street.
Kevin Martinez, 177 Martin Place. I, I've, since 2009, I've had some kind of an autoimmune problem that's decreasing my cartilage. I've had ankle replace, full ankle replacement on the right, and full knee replacement on the left. I've got also some, some spine issues. I've got bone-on-bone on my shoulders. I can go on and on with my medical conditions. But since it was legal, I'm not about to do anything legal, but since it became legal medically, I tried some marijuana, and it helps in a lot of ways. So I didn't want to do anything illegal. I first, I got everything all together, and the fact is, is that if, since it helps, I use it now. Since then, I've developed a, a liver, fatty liver, and the doctor recommended I don't drink anymore. I used to have a glass of wine before bed to help me relax. Now I do this instead, and it really works fine in place of a glass of wine, and I don't do it irresponsibly, obviously, but the, last year, I grew three plants, and that was enough to fill my prescription for a year. That cost me all of $30, 10 bucks for the small little starter. And $30 to fill my prescription for a year fits my, my budget. The doctor put me on disability, forced me to put me on disability, which completely limits my budget. So what I'm trying to say is, and not to fill up my three minutes, is if I was to go to, like, the city and go fill my prescription, that would cost several thousand dollars, which I couldn't afford. So this would be just taking away what the doctor has prescribed for me that's working for my illness.
Well, Kevin, let's let the city attorney address that, because I believe this has to do with non-medical marijuana. Is that correct, Mark?
Right.
Yes, that, that is correct. So this ordinance actually does not affect, and doesn't have anything to do with the use of medical marijuana for medicinal purposes. So the ordinance only relates to commercial or industrial marijuana facilities located in the city, manufacture, processing, testing, wholesale distribution, and retail distribution. So if individuals have a medical marijuana card and are utilizing medical marijuana at this time for their own personal use, this ordinance doesn't affect them.
I got a question, though. So now that the, the state law passed, and you no longer need a medical marijuana card, how are we supposed to differentiate the guys who are doing it for the purpose, if I said, or just for fun?
So that, that, if I may, through the, through the.
Please.
Chair, that's a really good question, and that's one of the things we're all trying to figure out. It turns out that the state law, under Prop 64, if, if anybody read the fine print, says that the state, for example, is not going to be taxing medical marijuana, but is going to be taxing commercial marijuana. So state law still draws this distinction between individuals such as yourself and others who might have a need for medical marijuana, and those others who might wish to engage in marijuana use for recreational purposes. So one of the things that we're going to be trying to sort out is how do those two things coexist in the same place? But it, it, this ordinance nor state law shouldn't affect your ability to obtain medical marijuana if you wish to do so. Proposition 64 didn't eliminate medical marijuana. You can, you could still use that if you, if you'd like.
So I'm good where I'm at now. Because I can't bring anything inside, because I have grandchildren. I keep it all contained in a solid wall greenhouse, locked up.
Okay. Well, I don't know anything about that, but all I can say is that the, your use of medical marijuana is not prohibited by, by this ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry. My name is John Dillon. I'm a neighbor of Kevin's over on Martin Street, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I just, I hope going forward that you will continue to differentiate between medical marijuana. I'm on permanent disability myself. Free issues I'd, I'd rather not go into, it would just take up a lot of time. But going forward, I hope that you will continue to differentiate between, you know, use of this for legitimate medical purposes, and there's a long list, both anecdotal and actual medical fact, you know, glaucoma, cancer patients that are having problems with their appetite, HIV/AIDS patients, problems with sleeping, for instance. You know, the munchies are a well-known effect on marijuana, and sometimes you want people to be able to eat when they're sick. So anyway, I hope that the council, in considering any kind of regulations, will continue to differentiate between recreational and medical marijuana use, and also realize that as far as outdoor cultivation goes, you would be imposing considerable costs on people on, you know, meager disability income. Just the, the lights alone cost hundreds, maybe even thousands of dollars, and they're, they're quite high power, so the, your, your power bills would be hundred, couple hundred dollars a month. You know, for somebody on a disability, you're basically would be shutting them off of, of any chance of obtaining medicine at a reasonable, you know, a reasonable rate where they could produce it themselves. So please consider that going forward. And just lastly, I would like to say that I realize that there may or may not be permits or, or discussion about commercial operations going forward in the future, and I'll let that debate for another day, but if there is any commercial, you know, profits to be made going forward for any kind of outlets that are approved, if they are, I hope that you can devote a large portion of those funds to the San Bruno Park School District that's in need right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council on this? If we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from speaking on this item again. Any action by the council?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion or action by the council?
Through the Chair.
There you go.
Just one of the comments from the last speaker. City Attorney, correct me, but the way Prop 64 was written, any proceeds would only be given by the state. The municipality, the City of San Bruno, receives zero the way the measure was written. And so we would have to then go to a Proposition 218, which would require us to go to the vote of the people, to then try to recoup costs and/or get profit, whether they could be earmarked or not. But at this time, the way the law is written, the city receives nothing. If, am I accurate or not?
Yeah, yeah. Just with one small caveat, is, the city would continue to get a share of sales tax, just like it gets on sales tax of any item, because the commercial marijuana sales will be subject to sales tax. But aside from that, there are no proceeds coming to any, any city under Prop 64, and you're correct, council member, that in order for cities to impose a tax on a commercial activity, that would require a vote of the people. So that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at, is determining what would be the effect of these facilities, if any, in town. What would, what would the cost be, and, and is it possible for the city to recoup those costs through a ballot measure or vote of the people?
Okay. Any further discussion or action by the council on this item?
Through the Chair.
Ken?
I, I think we, we've got a lot to learn. And so I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we can extend the interim urgency ordinance.
Okay.
As stated.
Your resolution. Second.
Motion is second to extend the interim emergency ordinance. On the question?
I'm sorry, it's a resolution, so I will introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Okay. Great.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ibera, thank you.
All right. Now we'll get right onto item number 11, which is the annual report from the Parks and Recreation Commission.
All right, guys. By the way, the music was a really nice touch.
You did it for you.
Yeah, of course you did. Ah, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Palmer, and I'm currently serving as the chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm here tonight to present the commission's annual report and the 2016-2017 work plan. Our slide number two shows our commission members for 2015-2016. Looks like a really happy group over there. I'd like to introduce some of the fellow commissioners that are here with me this evening. Lucy Zamatia. Commissioner Laura Davis. Lori Greenberg.
Stand up.
I think, I think Lori just stood up.
Had to take a shot.
Chris Gonzalez. And Commissioner Dave Nigel, who has a lot of seniority. So I passed over, I passed over Mike Salazar on purpose, because I wanted to introduce the newest member of our, of our commission. And he brings, Mr. Salazar brings a lot of experience to the commission. I'm fairly certain that some of you may have met him previously, and we're very happy to have him, so Commissioner Salazar. Our student member's not here tonight, but I just wanted to briefly mention to you who she is. Her name is Charlene Smith. Charlene's a senior at Cappuccino High School. She's active in sports, and has served as the captain for the wrestling, water polo, and swim teams. She's looking forward to attending the University of Minnesota, and hopes to be able to study nursing. So Charlene can't be here tonight, but I wanted you to know who she was. The purpose of the commission, the purpose of the Parks and Recreation Commission is to make recommendations to the city council regarding community recreation needs. These can include a lot of different things, such as input on recreational activities, input on the various classes and programs offered by the Recreation Department, the use of recreational facilities and equipment, and the operation, supervision, and maintenance of playgrounds, athletic fields, the community swimming pool, indoor recreation facilities, auditoriums, and facilities designated for recreational use, with the exception of the senior center. As you know, they have their own, they have their own commission. Slide number four details are compliments for 2015-2016. These will be shown and discussed in a little more detail as I move through the presentation. in a little more detail as I move through the presentation, but I wanted to go over them briefly. The Parks and Recreation Commission provided input and support for new playground equipment that was installed at Commodore Park, worked with staff to develop and implement a plan for vehicle barriers at Commodore Park, completed the first phase of the master plan for the reconstruction of Earl Glenview Park, provided staff with input relative to the redesign of the youth enrichment scholarship program, excuse me, worked with staff to install a stop look sign in City Park, assisted staff with changes to the master fee schedule. And in April, the commission awarded the annual community recognition award. And as I said, we'll discuss these in a little more detail as I go through. Slide number five shows Commodore Park. The Parks and Recreation Commission assisted with the planning, development and the installation of the new playground equipment. In addition, the commission worked with the staff to install some natural barriers to deter vehicles from entering the park. Some of these features, some of the features of these two projects include the new playground equipment, which has a nautical theme to it. I've been by several times and it appears to be very popular. A newly designed foundation for the play area, which is a soft rubber material designed to prevent injuries. The installation of trees and bushes, which have been placed in specific locations to keep cars, trucks from entering the park. One of our commissioners had noticed on weekends that vehicles were hopping the curb along Cherry Avenue. So we took action to mediate that. I want to mention one other thing about Commodore Park. In addition to things that are up there, we also were able to incorporate the city's Adopt a Park program there. And we had some new shrubs planted around the Commodore Park sign. I don't know if you got a chance to go out there and look at those. The, the group that took part in that planning of the bushes was Brownie Troop Number 62402. And this is just an indication of how well the Adopt a Park program is doing. We think it's doing really well. And Commissioner Gonzalez is the, the subcommittee chairperson for that and has done a wonderful job. Slide number six, notes the work of the commission and its subcommittee that was appointed to assist with the development of the Earl Glenview Park reconstruction master plan. I'd like to recognize the three commissioners that were appointed to this subcommittee. Commissioners Lucy Zamatia, Lori Greenberg and Laura Davis. They were active participants at the three community workshops. They took, which took place on February 2nd, March 21st and May 12th. All three commissioners will continue to take part in any meetings or study sessions, study sessions. The commission recently approved the draft of a reconstruction plan that had been recommended by the majority of the residents of the area. The plan was presented and approved by the city council at its meeting of Tuesday, September 27. I want to note that the commission will, will continue to take part in this project and has identified the, the project as part of its work plan for 2016-2017. The redesign of the, the youth enrichment scholarship application, including redesigning the guidelines and the actual application, so that they are, they were more, so they're more streamlined and easier to understand by those wishing to submit an application. And, and it's now post, posting the program on the city's website. I'll talk a little bit about this. For the past couple of years, we've kind of gone back and forth about how to make this part of the park a little safer for people that ride bikes, roller blade, skateboards. What you're looking at is where the City Park pathway intersects at the employee parking lot behind Third Base of Lera Field. So we frequently discussed the park pathway that terminates in that parking lot. The commission, we spent a considerable amount of time discussing this at meetings, informed a subcommittee to determine the best plan for the area. It was the eventual finding of the commission that incorporating the city's Stop, Wave and Walk program, but in a, in a shorter version, that had been developed by the Traffic and Pedestrian Commission would be appropriate. And this slide shows the actual markings on the pavement now. And we feel that this was a, a good solution for everyone. And my wing person needs to, there you go. Okay. The community recognition award. This year, the Parks and Recreation Commission awarded the community recognition award to Tony and Alisa Geraldi. Nominations for the community recognition award accepted during February of each year, and three nominations were submitted for this fiscal year. Tony and Alisa were recognized for their 25 years of service to the nutrition program at the San Bruno Senior Center and the San Bruno community. They were both in attendance at the April Parks and Recreation Commission to receive this award, and they were, they were quite delighted to, to have the award. It was kind of a touching little ceremony for us. So. Slide number 10, details our, our goals and our work plan for 2016-2017. We're going to continue to provide input and recommendations for the design and reconstruction of Earl Glenview Park. We're going to provide input and recommendations for the planning and the development of the new park to be located at the Florida Avenue property. Provide input and recommendations for the city's initiative to evaluate program and construct a new recreation complex, pool and our community center. Continue to provide input and recommendations for improvements to the city, the city's parks pathways. Continue to provide input and recommendations to the city's dog park. This will involve the formation of a subcommittee to review the city's existing dog park. And this will lead to some formal recommendations, which will be presented to the city council at a later date. We're also going to focus on restructuring the Parks and Recreation Commission's Parks Inspection Program. So this will conclude my presentation for this evening. Do you have any questions for me or for any of the other commissioners that are here?
Any question for Mike? Ken?
Through the, oh.
I, I just love Tony and Alise. And
Yeah, they're fantastic.
I just think that they, that anyone that wins that award, and I, and I thank you for, for recognizing them, we need to do a little bit more to let the, let the community know that they've been recognized. And so I'll leave it to, you know, the commission to come up with something, you know, probably for next year is to, really to recognize them and possibly remind us who, who are past winners of this. So, you know, so that we, you know, so that they deserve that ongoing recognition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. The last thing you mentioned, reconstruction of your park inspection program. What do you mean by that? And what is that going to entail?
Currently, we inspect some facilities each year. But in the past, we've found that that might not be the effect, most effective way to do that. So, so we're looking at different ideas to maybe focus on specific areas and specific needs at different places.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
No, the reason I'm, I'm kind of nodding, I have a, let's see, I have a specific, not a suggestion, but a comment, I suppose. I'm familiar with the Seventh Avenue Park, not the one by Walnut, but the other one by, on the south side of San Bruno Avenue. And it, to me, it seems extremely underutilized and kind of blank. So I'm, I'm hoping that that is one of the top things on your list.
Well, one of the things that we have, that the commission had been doing was rotating and not getting to every park maybe as soon as they should have. So we can certainly take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair. I just wanted to also add to what Ken said. I was at that April meeting when they were awarded. And to my memory, they didn't even know they were getting it.
Yeah, they didn't.
It was a surprise. Fred Perez, who used to work at the Senior Center, actually coordinated and got them here. He's retired, but it was important. They had worked together. He worked for the city and they volunteered for it. So it was actually a very special moment, especially that they were surprised. I don't know, I forgot the reason they thought they were there.
Yeah, I don't know, but they were certainly surprised.
Fred did a good job.
And you're right, it was a touching little moment.
But that's, that's something when you have a retired employee comes back to be a part of that. So I would agree that I'd like to see it more advertised as well as participated and give them that recognition. It goes back many years. I remember the plaque at the Rec Center lobby on some great names that are on that, on that plaque.
My wing person's taking all these notes.
First of all, thank you all for, for the work that you're doing. It's, it's really important. I was wondering if you could look into, give us some feed, or give me some feedback regarding a downtown park. We currently have Centennial Plaza, or is that the Centennial Park? I'm not sure which one it is. Plaza. It's roped off. There's a fountain in it. I'd like to see a real park downtown. We have a downtown children theme. It's prevalent across downtown. And what better than to attract children and families into our downtown by having a park downtown? A lot better than roping off an area. And, and I'd like to see what the commission thinks about using your experience, because you already went through two park designs. And maybe we don't need to hire an expensive consultant to, to come up with the ideas since, since we have an experienced commission. So I would ask if you can look at that.
I will make sure that it gets on a future agenda. Thank you.
Good. And as I always say for our commission boards and committees, you guys are the lifeblood of this whole city. People don't realize the thousands of volunteer hours that you all put in. It's, it is all volunteer. And especially Park and Rec, because you're so close to the community. I mean, people aren't just at the parks on a weekend. They're here every day of the week. San Bruno Park, you can look down there and it's, it's vibrant. So you play a real important part in the, in the life of our city. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item number nine, public comment, not on this, item's not on this agenda. It's the council's part is to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council on your public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll go right to conduct the business. Item 10, adopt a resolution authorizing filing of rubberized pavement grant program application for TRP 7 fiscal year 2016-17 with the California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. During the last council meeting, staff mentioned that we plan to be here tonight to present this item in regards to the CalRecycle grant.
Start all over, Jimmy.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. At the last council meeting, staff mentioned that we plan to be here tonight to present this item on a CalRecycle grant. Since the city's pavement management program has limited funding, staff is always looking for opportunities such as grants to support the paving program. Due to the limited available funding, the city is unable to maintain all the streets. This slide here shows the amount of deferred maintenance from now until the next five years. The deferred maintenance has been growing since the city has limited amount of budget. And the street, to repair and to rehab the, the streets that have failed or failing. And the current total cost of deferred streets is approximately $12 million. Now until by 2020, it will increase to about $25 million if the city maintains a similar budget level. So in addition to grants, alternative pavement maintenance treatments are also being considered in an effort to maximize the use of available funds so the city is able to perform more maintenance of streets. One of the pavement treatment that is being considered is rubberized asphalt concrete. This product is derived from recycled rubber product produced from scrap tires. The rubberized asphalt concrete has been widely used and has many benefits, including being cost-effective, is durable, is quiet, and is also environmentally friendly. The city has used the, the rubberized asphalt concrete during the last paving project along San Anselmo. We also tried a rubber cape seal along Amador, a portion of Cedar and a portion of Herman. The CalTrains and CalRecycle performed studies on these, this product here and determined that the, it can be placed about half the thickness of a traditional asphalt. And it's also capable of maintaining the same pavement strength and extend the lifecycle as well. So here's a slide that shows the comparison between the two pavement deterioration curves. The one you see on red is the conventional hot mix asphalt, and the other is for the rubberized asphalt. So as you can see on the graphs here, it'll take approximately 13 years for the pavement to decline from PCI of 100 to 70 for the traditional hot mix asphalt. However, for rubberized asphalt, it will take approximately 20 years for pavement to decline from PCI of 100 to 70. So extending the life about seven years for that. So the city hasn't applied for this grant at all. And since it's the city's first time, we're eligible to receive a maximum reimbursement in the amount of $20 per ton, or up to about $350,000. This is, the reimbursement is approximately the cost differential between the, the rubberized and the conventional hot mix asphalt. And the grant requires that the street segments to be identified and included in the application. And the staff derived these street segments using the pavement management program called Streetsaver. And we came up with the list over the next three years. Although the, the list is included in, in the grant application, staff confirmed what the grant administrator that the city is able to substitute or replace the street segments by submitting a project change request later on if it does change. And these streets that we've selected, because they're at risk of failing, the Streetsaver deferred maintenance on streets below PCI of 100, uh, below PCI of 40, since the streets are about to fail and will require more extensive treatments. So therefore, the recommended streets are for streets that are above PCI of 40. And so that we can, we will continue to perform preventive maintenance using spurs seal for other streets as well. So staff, staff would like to engage with the Surface Infrastructure Suck Committee and to, at a future meeting, to talk about these street segments and determine whether or not, you know, they should be changed or not. And, and, but currently, the maximum grant amount, as I mentioned, was $350,000. But the city is, as you can see in the staff report, it was, we're applying for $246,000 worth of a grant. And the reason why is because over the next three years, there's a program budget of $6 million, $2 million each for the next three years for this paving program. And the total asphalt tonnage is approximately 12,300. So with $20 a ton, we're only limited to about $246,000 for a grant. So with that, I, you know, we can take any questions that you have on this item.
Any question for Jimmy at this time? Marty?
I think it's fantastic that we're looking at something different that'll extend the life. I had a question about the availability of, of, of this mix. Is it something that is readily available that, from the experience we had on the last phase of paving?
Right. We, we didn't have any issues with the last paving project. The, the rubber cape seal, there's, there's vendors, there's contractors that are out there that does this specialized work. So our contractor sub to another company to, to bring the product and to apply it for our project.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ken?
Jimmy, can you give us those locations again? The, the most recent applications?
Oh, yeah. It was on San Anselmo, Amador. We did rubber cape seal along Amador from Monterey all the way towards Sneed, the whole stretch of Amador, a portion of Cedar and a portion of Herman.
Thank you.
Anything else?
One last thing, sorry. Marty? If you could place the list of streets with the rating and the cost that it would take to bring it up to a certain level and have that available on the website so that people could understand what condition their street is in and what the improvement cost would, would be to actually do the streets.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else or action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruweng.
Aye. Item 12, comments from council members? Anything? Rico?
Through the chair. Just on a personal note, obviously Thanksgiving is just before us. But in light of a lot of what's on the news, which always isn't good, but our law enforcement that serve all our cities, obviously has had a challenging year. A lot of, as, as we've watched the news. I think one of the officers today told me it's up, just a large percent as far as from last year to this year, as far as killing in the line of duty. In light of that, I went down to the San Bruno Police Department and was allowed to do a ride along, say hello to some of the officers and the staff. And it's important for them to know, at least for me sitting up here, that I'm extremely proud and honored. proud and honored, and to have them serving our community, that I go to bed at night in this capacity, and I sleep well knowing that they're out there. I was privileged enough to ride along with a young man that I've known as a very young kid, who has obviously now been in with the department almost a year and a half. So very rewarding to see a young man grow up, still lives in town, and to serve his community. So on behalf of myself on this council, this Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for our public safety, our law enforcement, the challenges that they face. And I know sometimes, unfortunately, they may be second guessing some of the activities they have to walk into. But they're in my thoughts and prayers, and I was honored to be there today, and they have my support, and I want the department to know that.
Any other comments from council members? Marty?
Yes, thank you. Thanksgiving, I, I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and with the key word of giving. Currently, the San Bruno Education Foundation is in the midst of their fundraising drive. And currently, as of November 14th, they've reached 9,000 out of $25,000 of their goal. And the reason why that goal is important of 25,000 is that it's a matching grant from the Welch Family Foundation. So every dollar that you give to the San Bruno Education Foundation gets matched up to 25,000. So it's a, it's a, it's a way to, to double the donation. So I urge everybody to go on their website and take a look at it. They do a lot of good in our community, and it's about the kids. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, item 13, closed session. We had a closed session just before this meeting. Item 14, we're going to have a study session now, conduct a study session regarding the New California Voter Participation Rights Act SB 415 that mandates changes to the years in which municipal elections must be held. And just before we go into that study session, I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very, very happy Thanksgiving. There are a lot of things to be thankful for, despite what you may hear on the news. But think about it, we're all here tonight, we're safe, we're warm, and we had a beautiful musical presentation, so everybody have a wonderful Turkey Day. So we'll go into this study session right now, and I guess we'll do it right here. Are we going next door? Okay, great. And you're all welcome to the desk.